So we'll call our meeting to order and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Tom, you lead us in the pledge.
Yes, sir. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Want to welcome everybody to our meeting this morning and we don't have anybody in our audience today, but we do have our folks that are joining us via the broadcast and we want to welcome them to our meeting as well. Obviously, we don't have anyone in the audience for a citizen to bring any issue forward or because you're a citizen as well as covering the meeting as media, but do you have anything that you'd like to bring forward? Okay. And is there any item that any of the department heads would like to have brought forth? Okay, with that, we'll move on to the approval of our agenda. And to begin with, we would like to remove items nine E and nine F. This is to allow our staff to give these items further review and answer some of the questions that they had and make sure that when we do act on these particular items that we've got everything done properly. Are there any other additions or corrections or deletions to the agenda by any department heads or any commissioners?
Chairman, I would request the executive session for personnel at the just started executive session at the end of the meeting.
Okay. Commissioner Falcon has asked for an executive session at the end of the meeting following the commissioner reports and discussions and this is for personnel reasons. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other additions or corrections to our agenda? Yes, Stephanie.
I just want to be it noted that on your desk you received an additional claim to include in the claim cycle according to county or the board's policy is if we've received the credit card claim to play pay that as soon as possible. We did get it yesterday, so I filled it out and I gave you all a copy on your desk so it can be included with claims.
Yeah, everyone has a copy of the claims and the reason we do this is because of our billing cycle and sometimes for the credit card, we end up getting a late fee because just simply because of our billing cycle and this will take care of that. There being nothing else, we've got our consent agenda items, approval of the previous minutes, travel and education, personnel action notices, cellular allowances and approval of the human services report. They're all in everyone's packet. Are there any questions regarding the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none. With without objection, we'll approve the consent agenda and move on to our routine business, which is item number seven. This is the approval of the claims along with the supplemental additions that we just referred to. The chair would entertain a motion for discussion. Moved by Krogman, second by Falcon. Discussion. We've all had a chance to review the claims and I know Dennis, you caught it too probably that $200 for emergency management. I'm just picking on Bob. No further discussion or questions regarding the claims? Please call the roll.
Why Seth?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carrying.
Our department heads. I guess I don't recall which end we started on last week, so Bob Hill, we'll let you come up first.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Morning.
First thing, I attended an eight county meeting yesterday expecting to see the Secretary of Ag and I saw one of his directors for economic development, I believe, and he spoke mainly about his Chinese trip that they went on and it was good for the state of South Dakota apparently. We had a full-scale exercise on May 15th. We had nine people in the EOC and we had two people participate externally. It was a good exercise. We did find some bugs in the EOC, which is normal when you're just setting up a new new set of equipment and everything and we overcame all the deficiencies and I think we're end up with a good report at the end of the day on that. We I discussed about alternate zoning board members last month and we are going to postpone that another couple of weeks. We want to bring some issues up to the zoning board to see are we going to have to change our bylaws and stuff like that before I bring it back to the county commission, but I do want to talk to my zoning board again and then I'll talk to the deputy state's attorney and then I'll bring that forward. And last week's PPCC ICS training went well, wasn't heavily attended, but it did go well. I attended the fire chiefs meeting last Thursday night and we updated our resource listing on the local fire departments. Tomorrow, I'm going to Orange City, Iowa. We've got a tri-state community emergency management association between Iowa, Minnesota and South Dakota and it allows us to get together with the National Weather Service out of Sioux Falls and we meet quarterly and it's I've got a travel request in for that already. Thursday, our region six coordinator is going to be here from the office of emergency management and we're also doing a couple of school visits where they're doing what's known as an ACAM, an assessment of the security at the local schools. And Ms. Thoreau will be be working with him on that. June 28th and 29th, the of this year, the Brookings Radio Club has requested to use our command trailer for their field days event, so I'll work with the police department to get that back so we can get it over there for them. And other than that, my office is working on the annual budget and the hazmat plan at this time. Any questions? Thank you.
Any any questions for Bob? Okay, thanks, Bob. Excuse me, equalization.
Good morning. I haven't been up here for a little while, so just a brief update on what we're up to in our office. The three appraisers in the office, full-time appraisers, are out reviewing Brookings City, so there's pink tags hanging everywhere in town and they each have their area and it's going very well. It's being well received. We're getting a lot of callbacks for appointments, so I'm pleased with that. Anytime you can leave a tag and people call back for an appointment is great, so. Brookings County abstract for 2014 has been completed and submitted to PIER. We are one of the counties that received our factors early enough to get the abstract in on time, which it was due in PIER yesterday. And Vicki was kind enough to hand deliver it when she went to the spring workshop, but a lot of counties don't even have their factors yet, so they've been given an extension to get their abstracts in. And how long that extension is, I don't know, but ours is in, so that's a good thing. I did attend a week ago Friday, I attended the leader cast out to the Swiftell Center. I felt it was different this year. Last year, it was really a lot of educational information on how to be a good leader. This year, I felt it was more motivational maybe. It was larger this year and the speakers were good, but I felt it was more motivational than actual tips on how to be a good leader and it was a lot more advertising this year, so just a little different format. I also attended the eight county meeting in hopes of hearing the Secretary of Ag yesterday and he was on the agenda, but he was not there, so I was a little disappointed with that. And our staff will be attending the NACRO conference in Deadwood, June 9th through the 13th, and I will be assisting Jim Shady on a breakout session on wineries and valuing vineyards, so that that could be interesting. And I'm hoping Jim fills more of the hour and a half than I have to fill and I know he can, so any questions?
Okay, thanks, Joyce. Hi Vicki.
Good morning. Well, our office has just been collecting taxes. We're done with that. We collected over 16 million in April and went into May and I think we've got pretty much everything collected that's came in and we've sent out our delinquent letters. We had 1,043 letters that went out and it isn't mandated that we have to send those letters out, but we choose to. I think it's well worth the postage to send them out and the work to do that. It catches any splits that have, you know, it has to go out to who owned the property in November of 2012 and now we're in 14 and a lot of those properties have changed hands and they went to the original owners and they are no longer the ones paying the taxes. So that gives us a chance to get that to the people that should be paying them and so I think it's a good good thing to have and there was a few escrows like normal that didn't get paid and that way we can follow up on those. And been to the spring workshop in PIER, that was always good. It's always educational and good to talk to the other county officials and see what's going on in their counties. And we started out taking four tax deeds this year for back taxes. We're down to one. Everybody else has been in and paid, so we're still moving forward with the one. And then we have one that set up a tax agreement that was delinquent and quit making payments, so we're following up with the tax deed process on that one. And Abby's been involved with those and we always go to her to make sure we're doing it correctly. So that is pretty much what our office has been up to and working with the election, Stacy can tell you, you know, they've been voting early and that type of thing, so.
Okay, questions for Vicki?
Thanks.
Thanks, thank you. Marty.
Morning Sheriff.
Just briefly give you rundown of the detention center. We have 15 currently in custody, have 27 on daily PBTs and we have 26 on scram bracelets and we have one coming in for urinalysis test. We had a we had a prisoner in Iowa to get picked up and then we're waiting on a governor's warrant. Abby's working on a governor's warrant for Wisconsin. We have picked up a person on a warrant in Wisconsin. I think it's Green Bay. I'm not sure. Is it Green Bay, Wisconsin? I can't remember, but it's in Wisconsin and he's fighting extradition and Abby's working on a governor's warrant to get him back and so forth. We had a couple of major accidents in the last couple of weeks. The highway patrol was the primary investigators. They took over the accidents and so that was that was good to have them have them help out on those things and stuff. We got the insurance is going to settle on on the pickup that was that was totaled on the interstate. I think it was a little over $17,000 for replacement on that and so I'm going to look for a used used that was going to take out of the fleet, but that was going to go to the investigator, one of the investigators, so. And then his car is going to the RSVP car, so I'm going to look for a used one and just probably locally. I got a couple of salesmen or so hopefully I can get something with lower mileage on the pickup, so you know, some good comes out of bad, you know? Not that I wanted the pickup destroyed because it was a good pickup, but it had 139,000 miles on it, so I might be able to pick up something with less miles and so like I say, sometimes good comes out of bad. One thing maybe your commissioners, if you'd want to look at is that when when I got an estimate for asphalting across the street where the old church was, I told them to give me an estimate for right for the boulevard parking right in front of the sheriff's office and that came to $10,000 because they have to bring up the old tear it up and redo, but I didn't budget for that, so I'm not going to do that. But as I drove around the courthouse on the just something to think about if on the west side of the courthouse, that and that is really in bad shape. So I don't know if that's something that you want to look for for next year or whatever. I think in front of the sheriff's office, just you know, some patching is okay then and it'll get me by, but I did notice on the on the west side that that's really deteriorating. So that's just something to think about at budget time, so.
May I suggest that you visit with Dick and the two of you kind of look it over and then come back to us and?
Okay. Can I just briefly talk to Dick actually this morning?
Give us some thoughts so if if something should be done, we can incorporate it into the budget.
Yeah, and I'm just thinking that probably will be about the same cost as what had been in front of the sheriff's office, I would think. It seems longer, but it's got to be about the same footage, but so I would think around to that probably 20 grand or so for both sides, but my side isn't that bad. I can just do some patching and I I called the city, I was trying to get them to do it and they kind of laughed at me. I says, you guys have boulevards, you charge boulevards, I would think you would redo that and cause kind of laughed at me, but.
I guess what comes to my mind is if if there is a need and that's why you and Dick should be kind of coordinating that right away because we may save some cost if if it is necessary that we do the west side of the courthouse, we can probably save some mobilization and be some efficiency by doing both projects at the same time.
At the same time, sure, not a problem. Okay, the other thing is is I missed the 9-1 meeting last week and I was out at DOT. The highway patrol had the sheriff from Pennington County, Kevin Tom come in and did a leadership presentation and the highway patrol had some of their lieutenants and sergeants and so forth and from the surrounding areas and I took three of my supervisors along with me to that and he gave a very good program on leadership and so forth, so it was it was and it was nice to 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 visit with some of these troopers from other areas also, the sergeants and the lieutenant, so went good. The captain of the highway patrol promised us some 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 people here pretty soon, so but actually it's been going good. We're down three troopers right now for this for this area, but it everything's been going good. They've really been stepping up and and helping a lot, so even with the shortage of troopers, so. Other than that, that's all I have.
Any questions for Marty?
Okay.
I would guess the one thing we want to keep in the back of our minds and we get through with reviewing strategic planning and all that is is the board tour of the facility over there to see what what the positives and negatives of the situation are as far as doing any reconfiguring or remodeling or whatever, so.
Good.
Keep that keep that in mind and remind us if we forget to mention it to you.
Okay, yeah, absolutely, so thank you.
Is that prisoner or a Green Bay fan?
What's that?
Is that a prisoner or Packer fan?
I don't know, I'll have to check.
Influence, well, how would I do with them?
I'll have to check.
Mr. Burke from Highway, good morning.
Good morning. I have quite a bit of stuff coming up on the agenda, but just briefly, our building progress is coming along real well now that the weather's straightened out, starting to haul P rock about 25% done, marking for patching, which we do, and then Boz, when they come around to do it, will know where to go and how much to put down and that is about it unless you have some questions. Oh, and then this afternoon, we have that 34th Avenue meeting at 2:00, so.
How many cuts do you have out there in roads? I was up on the Bruce Road again the other day and those two up there still, how many cuts do you have? When are they going to be filled and fixed?
I I didn't hear you.
Those those cuts in the road?
Yeah.
Up by Bruce?
Right.
I don't know how many of those you have for Boz, but I would assume that they'll get fixed at the same time.
Well.
I mean, they just continue to be hard to maintain and get pretty rough.
Right. Actually, those are the ones that we clear out and we put in the initial patch to level out the surface with black top and then Boz comes and goes over the top to taper and feather so it's a smoother, more permanent patch, but those are getting done. We just we got a problem with our backhoe and our new backhoe hasn't showed up yet, so that'll move real quickly.
Okay, so you need it, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That and and we'll switch this year once we get our vibratory packer. We should be able to do that right as we install, so that'll be a little different process than what we've normally done, so you're right, it'll make it.
Are you are you expecting your backhoe soon?
The when we approved it back there, they said maybe around the first of July, so I would assume it'll be the other one, hopefully we can get the parts today and get it back functioning, so it won't be too long.
The box culverts completed on nine.
Yes.
They still got gravel over the the surface, so you can't really see it yet, but
Right.
it looks like it's going to be pretty nice.
Yeah, it'll be really nice and then the other thing is we'll no longer need object markers because now we have the clear zone and and the width that's needed for to match the road, so it'll make it real nice and buddy buddy might come through there and wonder what happened to it, but it's there, it's just wider and safer and a lot nicer structure, so.
Is it just gravel over the top of it initially or or do they have more work to do on it?
No, every everything's done. That's our responsibility is to patch it, so that'll be another one that we'll dig out. We'll put the initial mat of black top in there and then Boz will come and go over the top and then that road will also get chip sealed this year if you noticed all the cracks are filled and everything, so.
No, it's really white, it looks nice.
Yeah, it looks kind of open, you wonder what happened.
It should last for many years.
Oh, certainly.
With no maintenance, that's the big thing.
Yeah.
Okay. Other questions for Dick? Okay, thanks. Gary, you've got some items from the weed board coming up. Did you have anything other than that that you wanted to bring forward this morning?
No.
Okay, and if you do, feel free to mention it to us when when we do your agenda item. Mike from Veteran Service and Welfare? Morning.
I just come to kind of update you real quickly. We've went through, there's this funding source that it's a combination between ICAP and federal monies. Anyway, we spent most of that, we're down to about $600 on that and that goes for rent and utilities. All the deposit money is now gone for money for going towards deposits, so we're zero there and I did take part partake in the exercise that Bob had earlier. I can't even think which day it was, days can run together, but other than that, I think the welfare that's the welfare side and the vet side, everything seems to be going pretty well, at least from my point of view.
It's interesting with the the tabletop exercises, how it really does involve just about all of our departments in some some way if we had the major disaster come through. I mean.
Very, very informative.
It's certainly going to affect your department if we had the right right disaster, so. No other question?
I guess at your local level, we're fine. There's a lot of stuff going on at the national level right now as far as the veterans and I guess not asking for your opinion more than will this have any effect on us or is it is it mainly with the?
I've I've been actually approached by some organizations about putting out a statement and I'm trying to figure out for sure how to word it. And and I'm kind of kind of holding back a little bit, see what some of the investigations have have turned up. South Dakota has the Black Hills Healthcare System and the Sioux Falls Healthcare System, which is for a state our size is amazing, but the two of them have always ranked in the top 10 in the nation. Most of the time, they're one and two or one and three in the nation, so our veterans getting in in a timely manner has never really been an issue. The care that our veterans receive is is very, very seldom we have any negative comments on it, so we're just hoping that they don't start drawing resources from us to send other ones and and we have lost some of our upper echelon people that were here originally in South Dakota, two other areas because they did have issues and one of them, his first name is Pat and he was told he was going to go to Waco or retire, so because Waco had some serious issues, so they are moving around, but we've been very, very blessed here in in South Dakota.
But the impact you may see is that possibly we could lose some people that to help out in some other areas is probably the biggest impact probably.
My my biggest fear is that they would start taking some of our of our leadership out of South Dakota and sending it to these places that have some of the issues.
I certainly don't see the complaints from this area. I mean, that's that's what you're saying, it's not this area that's impacted by it, it's it's a metro areas probably in the larger areas.
One of the areas I heard, you know, some complaints was out of Wyoming, Cheyenne, Wyoming, which I found kind of surprising because, you know, looking again at the Black Hills Healthcare System, which is right next door to Cheyenne, actually part of of the Fort Meade people to go over into Wyoming, so that that really surprised me. I'm kind of waiting to hear what actually comes out of that.
Thanks, Mike. I think we got our department heads here present taken care of. Stacy, we'll go on to you with the approval of the finance officer's report. You've got some several be it noted for us.
Just the report itself, just the be it noted items, auditors account, the treasure, payroll and additive totals, the highway expenditure adjustment and the register of deeds statement of fees collected. I also I updated you on the use of the fire station on Sixth on Sixth Street and 20th Avenue and I was told that that the city does not want us to be to use it for voting in case there is a fire, so I guess I don't know if we're back at square one or if there's some more discussions that can be held on that part. I think I mentioned, you know, we used Holy Life Tabernacle, this doesn't solve the SDSU issue, but it would maybe take some more of the pressure off of the Bethel Baptist location if we place something else on that southwest side of town. Swiftell, I mean, we can take a look at it after June. Absentee voting so far has been minimal, very, very few, very few people. I think we're maybe at 140 absentees and and I went out to the assisted living centers and the nursing homes last week, so the majority of those absentees are from those folks that took part in my coming out to see them last week. So we can see how Swiftell Center does in June. I'm not against moving it. The other thing to think of too is in 2016 and they do the Sixth Street project. I don't know when that's going to happen, exactly the exact dates, but it may affect when we can get over across the interstate. I know it's going to be shut down for a while, so we may just end up having to move Swiftell regardless because if we can't get over there, if the interstate is closed over on Sixth Street, no one at all will go over there to use it, so. I don't know if you guys have any more thoughts or if you've given any consideration to any other locations. Believe me, it's something that I think about almost daily, where we're going to be, so that's all I have unless you guys if you have any questions.
I guess I just I just comment, you know, I'd like to I'd like to still have more discussion on the fire department. I think there's, you know, that's the that's that would be a good location. I think discussion, preliminary discussion I've heard is, well, if they have a fire, there's no place for a fireman to park. Well, 50 to 75% of the firemen that respond to fires go downtown where all the trucks are. I mean, unless they all go back there and meet after the fire or have something that they have to go there for, but this is a one-day situation. It's not like we're trying to tie up the facility for a week at a time. It's it's and I don't know how many parking spots you anticipate you may need for voters. That's a hard call too probably, but and maybe it's not big enough and maybe we need to look and see how many that could get taken up if 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 there was a fire and how many we would need if we were maxed out and I still like to pursue that. I think that's a fantastic location. I think and I understand, I mean, it's it's an emergency responder, you know, department, but I still think that, you know, we should have further discussion. I don't know what you guys think, I just I'd like to have a little more discussion on it rather than, no, we can't use it, well.
I think it's a really good location, but I mean, so I'm willing for more discussion and obviously, safety is number one, but it's a great location, there's no doubt about that.
Any other comments? Marty?
Just just observation, when that when there's a fire, a lot of them park in the street and on the north side of the building and on the west side, I I don't see where a lot of them park on the west side of that building. When I see firemen there, just in front of the building, you know, on the because they run into the the doors open and they run in that way, yeah.
Well, I think, you know, what what I've seen over the years is people are assigned to a certain station and the ones go there, they go those trucks because that's their trucks. And the ones go there, they, those trucks, cause that's their trucks. It isn't like all forty firemen go off to that station. I mean, I guess I'm, I'm, I'd like to have a little more clarification on if that's, if that's the situation. Yes, Bob?
Also, on Tuesdays, they have training, and they've had it for, ever since I've been here, for ten years. Tuesday is their training night. So that parking lot is full on Tuesday nights. That's where they bring all the fire, firemen from all the different stations in, to that particular station for training.
True, that's true.
And that's why they built the new, the new training room, quote unquote, so.
What time does the training start?
Seven?
What time does the polls close?
Seven, but they're not out of there right at seven.
But the voters would, oh, unless you had long lines, you, you accommodate.
Right, and then they have to finish paperwork. It's usually probably closer to seven thirty or so before, seven thirty quarter to eight, by the time the poll workers are done at the location.
But consideration, I mean, for one, I mean, I'm not speaking for them, but if you start at seven, you start at eight one time. Or a lot of times, they take their trucks and go out and do training, and they're not even there. But anyway, I, I just like to have more discussion with it. I mean, I'm not saying that, you know, we're, we're gonna get there, but I, I just think it's such a great location, and Tom came up with it, that.
Well, that was by accident, but, uh, I, I sure liked the idea of you visiting with him. Dennis, you're a good representative of the commission.
Okay. I wouldn't, I wouldn't be willing to do some more follow-up on it to.
Okay.
Get more clarification if the board wants me to, if they just say, they say, okay, thank you.
And I, I appreciate your concern and, about the construction and, and, uh, everyone needs to know that it could been a typical precinct location for the last fifty years. It could be disrupted by construction as well, so it isn't that we're changing things and, out of the norm in, in this case, but. And I also understand your concern and, and the reason that we wanna get these locations kinda nailed down, so we got consistency for the voters, so.
Yes, that's what I'd like.
You create that voting pattern, I know if I go here, I can vote.
Yeah, and that was gonna be my point, uh, you know, it sounds like, you know, vote centers are gonna be here to stay. And, uh, if we can find a consistent area and a spot, and if we know that within a year we're gonna have to move Swiftel anyway. You know, maybe we find a spot that's more consistent, so when it does shut down, which is gonna happen, and I can, I just can't see anybody getting there, uh, easy at all. And so, um, I think we would move that one sooner than later, just for the consistency of the whole, whole issue.
Okay. Anything else, Stacy?
That's all I have.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for Stacy? Finance report, good job, thank you. Moving on to the, uh, scheduled agenda items on our regular business. Item A is the action to approve Resolution fourteen twenty-one, and this is approving. Plot, uh, plot of Lot One and Lot Two of the Stalp Edition in the southwest quarter of seventeen one twelve fifty. And, um, it comes to us as a recommendation to approve unanimously, uh, from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Chair would entertain a motion. So, moved by Wyeth, second by Miller. Uh, discussion, Bob, did you have anything from staff to?
Well, this is actually a win-win for everyone here. Basically, what they're doing is they're downsizing an existing homestead area. And they're putting the remaining of the land into the quarter section itself, so. Instead of, instead of down, they're basically just downsizing the house area, but then they're putting more land back into crop production, so the, the planning commission thought it was a good idea.
Okay. Further comments, questions? Please call and roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, I, item B is the action to approve the malt beverage license, uh, or, and/or the, the, uh, South Dakota Farm Wine License Renewals for July one fourteen to June thirty fifteen. Chair would entertain a motion as such. Moved by Krogman, second by Miller. Any discussion?
Sheriff, any issues with these? Any issues? You're okay with all this?
Can I, as of yesterday, and I forgot to look this morning, cause I was out of the office all of yesterday. We still had one person waiting to come in and fill out their paperwork and pay taxes, but I, I believe that was done yesterday. It was done yesterday? Okay, yes, it was. So I think we're, we're set, so.
Okay. Any further discussion? Please call and roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item C is an action to appoint a member to the Bookings County Weed and Pest Board, and, uh, we have in our packet a copy of Mr. Noctigal's application. And his experience, and the chair would entertain a motion regarding such. Moved by Miller, second by. Krogie Beech, just a second, just a split second, Danny. Second by Krogman. Is there any discussion, questions, comments? I think all of us know Glenn Noctigal.
He's a good board member, he shows up all the time and participates.
Please call and roll.
Falcon?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number D is action to approve our Agreement fourteen forty-three with the State of South Dakota DOT for Weed Spring Service. The chair would entertain a motion for discussion. Moved by Falcon, second by, I got you in the book there, Danny. Second by Wyeth. Okay, discussion. Gary, do you have any comments about this? This is, it's a rather lengthy, uh, agreement. I, I read part of it until I fell asleep, and then I woke up and read more of it, and it. Okay. Any other questions?
Gary, would you come up to the front, cause once we get this done, I wanna discuss something else.
Does anybody have any questions on the agreement? Hearing none, please call and roll.
Wyeth? Kro- Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Did you have a question?
Yes, um, I was going to bring this up in my report, but if we do it now, then Gary won't have to stay for the whole meeting. And I want, we, at our weed board meeting, we discussed extensively whether or not we wanted to take the risk and spray for mosquitoes. And it was decided by the weed board, and the reason I'm bringing this up now is cause if you have any questions of Gary, you can ask them. But it was, um, decided by the weed board that. We would spray contingent on possibly having to hire another person, if Gary can find one, because he's having difficulty finding enough people. And then possibly, we would go to Abby and have her do a waiver. Um, an example of an issue that has come up is, uh, at one point, Gary didn't, wasn't aware of this until Marty told him, but. They sprayed near, in a development, and, um, a lady said that it killed her fish. And so, you know, if we don't know they're there, they can't protect that. And so, we thought possibly a waiver might be in order if people wanted their development sprayed by maybe the association chair or whatever. And then the last was, the last contingency was upon agreement of the commissioners.
Gary?
One other thing here, uh, was also no spraying by water, i.e. lakes, uh, rivers, uh, you know, sloughs. Uh, other, you know, uh, ditches that are full of water, uh, like out in Madera Township. Uh, in other words, just staying away from the water. Because that, as, as you know, in this day and age, it's, as of, uh, March, uh, twenty-fifth, I think it was, it was really getting to be a hot topic with the EPA. And of course, with the, with, with this permitting system here, uh, that's, that's, uh, part of it also. I mean, that's what started it, is our, is the Clean Water Act, so. I think we need to stay away from, from the, um, especially the lakes, just for the simple reason that this, uh, the insecticide that we use. Or that, that you have to use is, uh, death on fish. And I don't, and when, and the conditions that we're spraying under, which are, you know, they, one mile an hour to a maximum of ten. Uh, you wanna make sure that.
That's wind speed.
It's not gonna be drifting, well, it, it's a three hundred, roughly a three hundred foot swath, and you don't want it drifting down into the lake. Because if we get a, if we get a citizen complaint on that, uh, you know, here we go. And, uh, and if we kill fish, which, which apparently we did, uh, privately. But I just think that we should stay away from, from water, period.
I, I guess, if you're, if you're accomplishing a purpose, and, and you can be assured that the spraying is doing what it needs to do for, for, for the mosquitoes. Which I think is difficult to, you know, in a highly populated area, you're, you're trying to reduce the risk, and I guess, I would weigh the risk of. I guess I'm not necessarily against fish part of it, but if, if you're saving somebody's life and a fish dies, I mean. Uh, that risk to me is, is worth taking, but I guess I don't know if we are accomplishing that much. And if we can't spray around the lakes, that's where most of the population that's used to spray is anyway. I think we're kinda just running in circles here, and. And if, if we have an influx of, you know, if something starts coming out where we have more of the mosquitoes and we have to, it's kind of an emergency situation, then I'd see maybe we act, we react to that. If we start to piecemeal this thing, then we're gonna have people saying, wow, you sprayed over here, but you didn't come to my place. Well, we have this water over there, so we can't spray for you. Well, you know, and they're gonna request it, so I think we should either not spray at all, or spray everything that we can, and. And what do we accomplish, other than trying to reduce in a high populated area? So that's just my take, and I guess, I think the board is, appears they're just gonna sit back and see what, how things develop. Correct?
Well, yeah, we, we, I guess from, after our meeting, we're going to wait for, uh, guidance from the commission.
What, when we talked about the, uh, we have a gentleman here from the state, that. Dean, uh, there, he was talking a little bit about it and stuff, and they were asking, you know, for permit, and permitting process was more just to cover your bases. That you were actually permitted, not just going out and doing that, but that the requirements on there were not as strict as it, and, and stuff. It was basically almost a registration type of permitting type of thing, and, and, uh, seemed to downplay the potential for, you know, uh, fines and that kinda stuff. Uh, that being permitted would actually, or getting permit would actually help you protect yourself from any of that type of stuff. And, um, you know, and, you know, spraying in the ditches where there's a, where there's a slough and, and that kinda stuff, to me, is, is, is the prime spot where the water doesn't move. And it just sits there, and that's where I think we have the most, um, we could do the most good on killing these larvae before they get going, is on water that's not moving. That's just there, and that seems to be happening in ditches where there's not water flow. And I suppose there's potential for fish in that ditch, but, um, I guess I don't wanna say it never will be, but it just seems like if we outlaw all water, you know, then why do it? Cause that's where they're at. Um, I can certainly understand saying large lakes, uh, where there's a lot of people, and it's, it's difficult to obtain anything there. But it seems like those smaller areas of stretches of a half mile, where there's water sitting in the ditch stagnant, to hit that would be, would go a long ways and, and stuff. And so, I would hate to, to say no, no water whatsoever.
Abby did a, a review of the permit, and ruled that the permit was to protect the applicator. But there are several things, several requirements in the permit that are quite paper intense, um, that Gary will have to do. Consequently, we would need more help, um, but, you know, it's, we decided to leave it up to the commission whether or not to spray. And I realize, I, I don't know if that has to be an action item, or how that has to be handled, so.
Well, our action, uh, our action item would be to approve the agreement, which would be us moving forward with, with the spraying.
We don't have an agreement.
But, Tom, did you?
Talking mosquitoes here.
Yeah, we're talking mosquitoes.
Um, well, it seems like the, you're talking cities is what we're down to, cause the other concentration of people is around the lakes, so. Uh, is that true, talking about being asked to go to Bruce or whatever, but.
No, not necessarily the cities.
We're not doing Bruce, or the other cities.
So, I'm with Dennis. Uh, it sounds pretty spotty, and, and then the spray isn't necessary, the larvae type thing, that's a different oil, isn't it?
There's, uh, there's built up areas outside of the city that we've done in years past.
Oh, okay. But so, you, that you'd be free of water and be a concentrate, but, well.
We strictly do it all to sighting, we don't, we don't do any larva sighting.
Well, I've spent a lifetime with mosquitoes, and the only one that really bothers me is the West Nile one, and I guess if we're prepared to jump into action in an emergency situation. But it seems like the university checks that one, uh, the, all the different kinds of mosquitoes, the one that carries West Nile. We had that threat, and it was higher, a high threat. I guess I'd like to have a situation where we could, uh, take emergency action. And not go through thirty days of paperwork, or, you know, to have winter set in before, uh, we're ready to jump on it.
But if we don't have a permit done, then we don't spray at all, even in an emergency.
I'm like, I'm all for laying the groundwork, but I'm only for using it, uh, in an emergency. That, that, that's the way I look at it. I mean, mosquitoes are a pest, but if we start spot spraying, we're gonna hear complaints that they don't, people don't get it done, and, uh. And so, I, I, I look at it as a health emergency, rather than a nuisance emergency.
But spot spraying is what has always been done in the past. I mean, the developments have been sprayed.
But there'd be a lot less spots because of the lakes, cause you already, you already.
That's right.
Cause you always just gone over, if you went around.
Mike?
Hendricks?
Just for point of clarification on my part, then Commissioner Falcon, you're, you're in somewhat, you're in concert with what Commissioner, uh, Wyeth said. That we certainly wanna be geared up in the, in the event of an emergency situation, if we've got the influx or a large population of the West Nile type. Is that what you were referring to?
I think we're geared, I think we're geared up to the fact that we have the equipment, we have the spray. We're, we're ready if, if emergency comes up, and I, I, I think.
Okay.
You know, the permitting can be, I, I, I don't know, maybe your opinion, but go through the permitting process or get the applicant, you know, get the permit. And they may never use it, kind of a lot of, a lot of paperwork where we maybe can expedite it if it was an emergency, and I think that's.
We have a permit here to spray.
You already have it?
Yes.
Okay.
And I was told that, that we should have no problem with the permit as long as it's followed to the T.
Yeah.
And that's, and that's the crux to the problem, but.
Well, I think that's our responsibility to take that risk of, but if our department is recommending that we don't do it, I think we have to follow our department's recommendation. And I would concur that we just don't do it if we get into a situation where there gets to be an emergency, then we deal with it and make decisions. This board then can make the decisions.
So what qualifies it as an emergency?
Well, we'll have to wait and see. I mean, if, if, if we have an influx of West Nile, I mean, all of a sudden, we're having ten cases of West Nile, and it appears to be in a, in a particular area, that's when you respond to it.
Yeah, I think that's monitored by the state health department, and we could stay in concert with them, and also SDSU does those tests, and, uh. And we make that decision based upon the recommendation from the health department and, uh, from SDSU. I mean, I'm not a bug expert, but if people, we're having a high degree of risk of people getting West Nile, you got my attention, but. People just have to swat a few mosquitoes, I mean, well. I mean, well, welcome South Dakota, I mean, that's where it's always been.
And, I understand, and I don't, don't disagree with the comments of Commissioners Wyeth and Falcon, yet I hear loud and clear what Commissioner Krogman is saying here, is there's a lot of areas where you could spray the hatchery, and that water has no fish, it's not flowing, it's not going anywhere, it's just sitting there producing mosquitoes.
Well, I think mosquitoes are hanging around there, but isn't that a different application, when they apply oil to the water of a slough in a wetland, it's different than spraying above, you're just killing the mosquito, right? You're not killing the larvae, you have to use a different method.
Yeah, they're, they're different, different product.
Use what gets for the...
Which, which is the most effective?
The most, the, the adult sighting that we do is thirty, is roughly thirty percent controlled, and so, if you do the larva sighting, that obviously, you get better control with, with larva sighting, but to do larva sighting in the county, I don't know where you'd, where you'd start and where you'd end.
Mm-hmm.
You know?
Yeah. Get very, very costly.
Yeah, very costly.
I grew up in the sixth county mosquito control district in Minneapolis area, and they had a problem forty years ago, and they still have a problem forty years, and, so, other than the West Nile, I just have decided to live with mosquitoes, otherwise I'm moving to the west coast or something.
People need to protect themselves, is what they really need to do.
Okay.
But they're not, they say that, you hear Keiplinger and the rest of these people from the state saying, you know, spray yourself after five o'clock in the afternoon, that's kind of the magic time, and of course, that's when all the ballgames, the people want to go to the lake, and, and that's a shame that we've got to be fighting this endemic disease, but it, but that's the way it is. If you're not going to protect yourself, I can tell you, my third, my spraying out there, killing thirty percent of the mosquitoes isn't going to protect you either, because there, I know every time I get bit, it's just like playing Russian roulette, I'm going, well, now I got two weeks to worry about this.
Yeah.
And I just hate that, but...
Possibly spraying, you just said something, that possibly spraying is counterproductive, because people get a false sense of confidence.
It is, it is a false sense of confidence.
So is it kind of the majority consensus of the board to have your weed board equipped and prepared in the event of, of what appears to be maybe a serious situation with, like West Nile, and that you're, you're ready to spring into action once?
The equipment is ready and we're licensed, so that's, we have...
Does that become the majority consensus? Okay, we'll move forward that way, Gary.
So we're on hold.
Okay, did you have anything else?
It's a difficult, it's a difficult situation, it really is.
Well, I appreciate you wanting to protect the liability of your staff and your department and the county as well, so, I understand.
When, when the mosquitoes misters were tested, the guy remarked to me that, he says, ma'am, these are radars.
Good. Okay, moving on, action, item number G is action, action on resolution fourteen twenty-three, this is authorizing to use the reserves as matching fund requirements for projects P six forty-four, three oh one, and, and P six five sixty-six oh one, on forty-seven, four hundred and seventy-first Avenue. First of all, for discussion purposes, chair would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Falcon, second by Krogman. Now, discussion, Dick, do you have comments that you'd like to come forward or visit to? Yes?
I do need to note something about this resolution. The project numbers that are listed there coincide with the DOT's project numbers assigned to this, and it's part of our, you'll have to clarify, Dick, which plan, or, or...
The STIP, Strategic Traffic Planning. This is the federal funds that are...
Yep, so the numbers that you see there, project P six four four three ten, that all corresponds with the project that's already been approved by the board on the STIP plan. So I just want to make sure that we know what that's talking to. Abby thought we should clarify what the project's actually referring to, and at the last meeting, Dick said that the DOT wanted confirmation from the board that we were going to use reserve funds, we were going to just do an action item. I did do it as a resolution, just because we do have an election this year, it could be a change of board, and then that way, Dick has clear direction to do this for budget planning purposes as well, which you guys will be approving later this year.
Any other questions, board members?
I should say one, I believe.
Abby, did you have any comment that you wanted to make regarding this?
There's a table on the second part, you should follow the title for the numbers, I reversed the zero ones, so I'll crack that in the body of the...
Oh, okay.
My only comment was just clarifying to the public what it was we were specifically dealing with here, because I felt that the resolution was somewhat vague for the public's knowledge.
You're satisfied at this point, though?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? Comments? Hearing none, please call a roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number H is the action on agreement fourteen forty-four, and this is made by the city Aurora to occupy four hundred and seventy-sixth Avenue and two hundred and thirteenth Street for electrical services. Chair would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Falcon, second by Miller. Discussion? Dick, can you comment on this one?
This project is moving forward and probably almost complete by now, they just were advised by their legal staff that they really should dot their i's and cross their t's and turn in the application, but I, I was very aware of it, yes.
Okay.
And it's fine.
Okay. No further discussion, please call a roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number I is action on agreement fourteen forty-five, and this is made by Sioux Valley Energy to occupy two hundred and thirty, two hundred and thirteenth Street for underground electrical distribution. Chair would entertain a motion.
Moved.
Moved by Krogman, second by Falcon. Discussion? And Dick, I think in one of our conversations, they're well aware of the potential upgrade of the road. Okay.
And the reason for their application is because they're crossing under our road, Highway twenty-three.
Right.
Yeah, there's no problem.
Okay. No discussion, please call a roll.
Falcon?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Agreement fourteen forty-six is between the county and Corey Kent for voluntary right-of-way donation. Chair would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Falcon, second by Krogman. Discussion? Please call a roll.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number K is to approve agreement fourteen forty-seven, and this is between the county and Mike Arter for same reason, right-of-way donation. Chair would entertain? Moved by Krogman, second by Falcon. Discussion?
Yeah, quick, on the application, there's a question about, from, I guess from Mike...
Box culvert versus bridge?
Yeah.
Okay.
Did that get answered, or what? I believe so. The, the reason the structure is recommended is because when the DOT does the administering and planning for the replacement, that was what they felt would be the best application in that location. Just a half mile away, the same creek, the same everything, they put in a box culvert. Now, I believe that was probably a FEMA project, I'm not sure it was before my time, but the same criteria held true at that time, it felt that the box culvert would be the best application for that scenario, so, hard for me to explain that, but that's what the people at the DOT gave me as a reason.
Okay. I'm glad you brought that up, because I, as I looked at that, and wouldn't the box be the most cost-effective route to take, if we had a large box?
Um, yes and no. The, the other thing that comes into play with a box culvert, you change your location, your flow lines, and usually you're deeper, and you're trying to always permit the fish or to beca shiners or whatever, to, you know, continue to live and, and, and use the water. Sometimes a clear opening is a much better application, and you're less invasive to the thing, so it really is a total evaluation process done by them that obviously have a lot more experience and a lot more examples that they could give, should we ask, but in, in a general sense of the term, it's just whatever they see as the best application for that, is what they come up with.
Well, we spend a lot of money on dry creek beds for a minnow. No water, but we're protecting the minnow.
Okay. Dick, roughly, what's the difference in cost, percentage-wise? Twenty percent more for a bridge, supposed to a box, or just general rule of thumb, is it?
Yeah, I would, I would say a box is probably in the neighborhood of thirty-five percent, forty percent at the most, of what a structure would be.
Thank you. Quite a difference. Okay, any further discussion? Answer your question, Commissioner? Okay, please call a roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
L is action on, to approve agreement fourteen forty-eight. This is the same reason, it's between the county and David Iverson for voluntary donation or right-of-way. Chair would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Falcon, second by Wyeth. Discussion? Hearing none, please call a roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And item number M is the action to approve agreement fourteen forty-nine, and as well, this is between the county and Jeff Mersburgen for voluntary donation or right-of-way.
So moved.
Moved by Miller, second by Falcon. And for the benefit of those that are viewing and probably haven't had time to go through the packet and, and look at this, we're talking like point zero five acres, we're just a little piece of ground that we can use for during the construction in most cases, so...
The difference in the two, the first two are...
They're perpetual.
More of a permanent, and the second one is strictly a construction.
Yep. Okay. No further questions, please call a roll.
Falcon?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And we do appreciate the cooperation of the adjoining landowners to give us a, a little easement there, to use a small portion of their property was during the construction of these facilities. Item number N is action to award the following bid items, and I'm going to defer once again to our deputy state's attorney and Abby, I think we need to take these individually, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Okay, at this point, the chair would entertain a motion regarding bullet number one, we can call it N one if we want to, for the dump body hoist hydraulic truck portion plow, et cetera, for the amount of forty-four thousand seven twenty with Northern Truck.
So moved.
Moved by Falcon, second by Krogman. Is there any discussion? Now, Dick, as we go through this, if, if you have any point of clarification or any comment you want to make about one, why, feel free to interrupt, and we'll, we'll take your comments, so...
Okay.
Just a general comment, a general comment, all these, these are all within budget, and we only have one bidder, but you feel comfortable that they're within budget and they're, we can approve them, and I guess that would be the same question on all of them.
Yes, and that was, that was my question, since we only had one bidder, you okay?
But it is, yeah, but it is a responsible bid, and it's within the budget, so... Okay. Any other questions? Call a roll.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Then we go on to what I call N number two, which would be option number one, the directional plow, and this is also to Northern Truck, as, as well as the rest of them will be, for the amount of sixty-seven hundred and seventeen dollars, chair would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Miller, second by Krogman. Discussion? All in favor, say aye. I'm going to get done quicker. Please call a roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
You know, we could, we could just record the nay votes, and we could get... Item number three, or N three, is option two, and this is the mid-mound ten-foot wing, also to Northern, in the amount of ten thousand one thirty-three. Chair would entertain, moved by Falcon, second by Miller. Discussion? Please call a roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Number four, bullet number four, which is option three, this is the assist axle, wants to again to Northern Truck in the amount of fifty-six hundred ninety-three dollars. Moved by Wyeth, second by Krogman. Moved by Krogman, second by Wyeth. Oh, they were both, they're waving. Okay, any discussion? Call a roll.
Falcon?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Option four is the pup full plate, once again to Northern, in the amount of forty-two hundred and fourteen dollars.
So moved.
Second by Krogman, second, you missed, Danny beat you.
Good.
Second by Falcon, call a roll, please.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And number six, bullet number six is option five, and this is the sand spreader, once again to Northern, in the amount of fourteen thousand one hundred and seventy dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Krogman, second by Miller. Discussion? Please call a roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Aye. Item number ten, is the action on requests to fill vacancies. Abby, do these have to be done individually?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, ten, ten-one, I'm going to call it, is the first bullet, heavy equipment operator, Brookings County Highway Department, we have pretty, pretty detailed information on these in our packet, chair would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Falcon, second by Miller. Discussion on this one? Dick provided a lot of information in the packet, but if anybody's got questions of him, or any late comments on that one, Dick?
And I guess the payout and the anticipated time to fill this, do you...
It's listed on your report there, of about, the estimated severance is about seventy-two hundred dollars. Typically, we say to fill a position is four to six weeks when you do reference checks, Typically, we say to fill a position is four to six weeks when you do reference checks and, um, that kind of, you know, they give two weeks notice, however, this is a heavy equipment operator, so we o- often open that, well, we always open it up internally as well, we do often have other employees that are applying to move up. In that case, it would be less time to fill, but we're still going to have a vacancy, so the severance is still going to be accumulating while we fill the second vacancy.
But we're going to absorb some of this before, before the position's filled. That's a question, basically a question I had.
Okay. Satisfied? Okay, call the roll.
Miller.
Aye.
Falcon.
Aye.
Wyeth.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number two under sixteen is the IT internship with the county commission office. So moved. Moved by Falcon, second by Krogman. Discussion on this one, we've got a pretty good report on that as well.
Can I make some comments on this request?
Yes, yes, Stephanie.
Um, this request is coming from our office, originally we requested to use the funds that we budgeted for the IT inter- internship to fill our administrative internship because we were expecting an FML absence. As you know, since then, the dynamics of our office have changed. I no longer need that budget money that we had set aside because we don't have any, I don't have a deputy director anymore, so there's a wash there on that internship. We're requesting the ability to fill this because we need someone to be there to do kind of the day-to-day help desk items so that Aaron can spend his time working on getting some of the overall network administration and security things set up in an organized manner that will benefit us going forward. I listed some of the projects that they'd be working on in both my staff report and on the request.
Okay, any questions, staff, regarding this?
Well, I guess the, you, you're saying here that it'd be a, a part-time position through the school year and go to full-time during the summer, so that position would be there as long as that person's able to put in some hours?
Right, just through the end of the year, because then it would be a new budget request for two thousand sixteen. And quite frankly, I, I put on there a request to leave it posted, open until filled, because we're at a bad time for hiring student interns, because what we're hoping is that maybe we're going to catch someone who's back in town for the summer, who maybe has the skills from elsewhere, but, um, if not, then we'd like to try again in the fall if we can't get anyone to apply now, because these aren't items that we have to have done today, but we need extra help in order to get them implemented.
Any other discussion, questions? Please call the roll.
Falcon.
Aye.
Wyeth.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number eleven is our commission assistant report, Stephanie, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, I had several items in your packet for the board to discuss and, uh, maybe I'll just go through those and then you guys can discuss them during your time if you'd rather. Um, I did give you an update on the Novita project, it sounds like they're moving forward with a step of their financial closing. I did have to submit the second quarterly report on one of those grant applications and on that, uh, report, I just stated that we have not proceeded because we're waiting for a notice to proceed from the developer. So that has been done in your current with that grant that was requiring the quarterly reports. Uh, as far as the strategic plan, we do have the draft results, I put a copy of that on your desk this morning. When I just initially reviewed it when I got it last week, I think that it's going to need some additional discussion by the board because they kind of, you know, took some of your thoughts and put it into, um, some proposed answers or some proposed goal statements and I think you guys need to have some discussion on whether that meets what you were anticipating out of the results of that plan or not. They also said that they'd be sending me a, um, a management work plan that we could use for giving to department heads when they're going into the strategic part with the timelines. They have not sent that to me yet, so I haven't had that to review, but I do think the board should consider, um, setting a work session to kind of go into more depth with what that draft proposal is. I just have that noted that, just to keep it on the board's radar, that we do have to do a supplemental budget hearing if we're going to proceed with any construction this year on either Novita or Thirty-Fourth Avenue. And kind of my feeling is now it sounds like everything's getting moved to two thousand fifteen, is that correct? For construction?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to take that one off my pending list that I've been tracking for the last nine months and I'll move it to two thousand fifteen. The other thing is, um, when I started looking at the upcoming meeting dates, as you know, we're doing our budget timelines a little bit earlier this year in order to be compliant with state law requirements of when that budget is due to the auditor's office. The reason, if you look at your calendar and I don't know if, I don't have it pulled up here actually, I should have pulled it up on Dropbox, but, um, what we had scheduled for a meeting was July twenty-second and then August twelfth and August twenty-sixth. The reason why I had picked those two meetings in August was so that if we needed one more meeting before the last time to publish the provisional budget, we would have time to do so. Because we're stepping at all the hearings up a month, that's no longer really an issue for you. And because of that, I think the board might want to consider looking at, um, the meeting schedule and bumping the twelfth and the twenty-sixth back up to the fifth and the nineteenth, so you don't have a meeting on August twenty-second and, uh, twenty-sixth and again on September second. And the reason why you have to meet September second is that's outlined in state law for budget adoption, so I think it's easier when we have them spaced apart instead of going three weeks between a meeting and then having two back-to-back. I don't know if that works for everybody or if you want to consider it, but I just thought I'd bring it up because it's no longer, you know, our original reason for doing that was because of budgeting, that's no longer an issue.
Mr. Chair, my, we, you know, I plan accordingly how these are set up at the beginning of the year and if we do move it, I will not be able to be here for the, a meeting on the fifth. So that's just my opinion.
And that's understandable too.
And that's my only vacation I get all year and I
I just wanted to give you guys the option to talk about it because there will be a break from the twenty-second to the twelve, so there'll be two weeks between a meeting.
Yeah, and, and kind of the same way I, we have homeland security training out in Rapid City, the twenty-sixth, so if we have it on the twenty-sixth, I can't be there. And I, and, and that's, you know, and, and I don't like meetings back-to-back a week apart. I mean, it just seems like we don't get through, you know, get enough time to get information. It just kind of rushes it and I ask the question, Stephanie, so I guess it, whatever the board wants to do and I understand people have vacations, that's not, I mean, I mean, we kind of look at Tuesdays as kind of even open and if you have something you're doing, that's, that's part of the, but it's up.
Yeah, do five, do five and nineteen hit everybody else pretty good?
Uh, five's great, nineteen, I'm waiting to, to hear from headquarters, that'd be my wife, about the, a potential conflict there, but.
So maybe we should just keep it as is since everyone's got that planned in.
Well, I'm, I'm fine with five and nineteen, it's just a remote possibility that we might be honest.
You're okay, Ryan?
I'm fine with either or, it doesn't matter to me.
Okay, and I am too. Danny, five and nineteen would work for you?
Well, I'm going to be in Rapid for that homeland security on twenty-sixth, I guess that doesn't, isn't the reason to change it, but I guess that.
No, but I mean, five and nineteen are okay.
Yeah, that's better for me.
Well, we got, we would have, we would have a quorum even if Tom's situation.
I, me, me personally, I think we should keep it, uh, the same. You know, I certainly sympathize with planning and over a six-month, eight-month period and you haven't set out and you plan for certain things because of it to change it. I, I just, I think we should keep it the same unless we have a real strong reason that we have to meet sooner to accomplish something, I would rather keep them the way they are publicized and gone with, that's my opinion.
Yeah, that's no problem, I was just asked the question because of the back-to-back meetings, so.
Yeah, and, and I agree, I, back-to-back aren't great, but it's, I'd rather have everybody here and not change it just because of a back-to-back meeting, I guess, you know.
So.
No, we're going to lose Danny anyway.
So you don't care, huh? Well, and I, and I think even if we had it on the fifth, you wouldn't have made any, I mean, you, stuff would have been scheduled for the fifth, you'd have probably been gone anyway. Just because it happened, so it doesn't make any difference to me, I just.
You know, I think, I think if, if you look at the record, uh, the board does an outstanding job of, of meeting attendance and, and participating and, and everyone understands that there are times when you have a conflict and you, and you miss a meeting, yeah, so.
And, and it's fine, let's just leave it the way it is and, and I, you know, just, we'll be here, because I remember last year you called in for the meeting and that, when you're on vacation calling in for the meeting, isn't a lot of, you know, that's not a, something a person needs to take time out of your.
And I will, when I, I'm going to start working on next year's calendar and now that that's not a consideration anymore, we'll try to avoid that since that September meeting has to be the first meeting in September, so.
And this was something we didn't know until our calendar was set. Well, if that's how we're going to leave it, we'll leave it that way.
So the next item, um, that I had listed was a tour, the detention center. Hopefully, I was hoping to be able to schedule that following the June fifth meeting. Um, I know Don mentioned this earlier, but I also had it in the staff report that I thought it would be a good idea for the board to get a visual of both the cell blocks that Marty was discussing as well as, um, there was a question during the strategic planning session about the, um, the gun range, shooting range, I don't know the right terminology for it, but that was removed from the basement, which they're using for rec area and partially going to use for some meeting space too. And so if possible, if it works with the board, I'd like to schedule that tour following the meeting, the next meeting, okay?
Let me ask, Mart- Marty, as far as us scheduling, um, is there a difference in, in what you'd be able to, uh, what we'd be able to see and do and, and get into details of, of your, uh, facility based on your occupancy rate at a given time?
No.
That won't, you'll be fine, okay?
Um, the next item is work session. Uh, I already mentioned the, maybe the need to have a work session to talk, kind of formalize a little in better detail that strategic plan draft that you received today. I know everybody's busy, but you may also want to, I went through and looked at what, what we've had on the agenda for previous work session topics. I kind of crossed off the ones that are finalized that I'm aware of, you know, you still kind of have some open kind of pending items, I, most of it deals with either four-H or the strategic planning goals and then the Thirty-Fourth Avenue and Novita projects, but I still just had a list there in case it sparked somebody else's memory of something else that they had wanted to discuss. And I don't know if the board is interested in doing that, but I do think you are going to need at least a session to talk about, um, your strategic plan document and perhaps you could set it for, following the next regular meeting, we could go tour the jail at one and then come back for a work session following the tour. On June sixth. Or fifth, excuse me, not sixth. We meet on a Thursday because of canvassing the vote.
How does that date look to everybody if we were to?
What date did you say?
June fifth and after the next regular meeting? Would that work if I scheduled the tour at one and then come back and do the work session following that? Okay.
Work for everyone?
Yeah.
All right, let's go forward if we've got, everyone can attend.
Um, also in your packet, I gave you an updated of the surplus, the monthly surplus cash analysis that Stacy reports, I updated your graphs to show you kind of where we are for the year. Still falling in line with what we anticipated based on the money that was set aside at the end of two thousand thirteen, it's two thousand fourteen right now. Um, so just wanting to make sure that pointed out that that was in your, um, packet, you're going to see a big jump obviously because of tax payments received, but that's why we always say March is the lowest reporting time of the year because we've started spending a lot of our capital projects, um, you know, equipment purchases, those kind of things and haven't received any income in, so that's always a low point and then, as you can see, we jumped way back up in April, so. We are only required to report at three different times, which you'll see that on the third page of graphs and that's March, September and December, but the other ones just show the month-by-month. We started doing this in two thousand and eleven and I think it's been very helpful since Stacy's been doing that on a monthly basis, so we have a better gauge of what our, um, cash flow operas- operational needs are for the county, just making monthly payments and things like that. Just a couple other updates, um, I apologize for not having more time on the board issues, I've been spending a great amount of time on HR issues, we've had quite a few new hires and terminations to process and we've had a billing issue, we've been working on with one of our benefits. We, I completed, I guess not we, I, I've been doing the discrimination testing on all of our benefit plans that you have to do on an annual basis, got those all completed and turned in. Um, we've had some Cobra notifications go out, we've had four or five FML requests come in. We also did start up our wellness challenge again for the year, we had a little more people sign up, a few more people sign up, which was great and that's just gearing up. We're going to be having a couple lunch-in learns coming up and we're also working with the city on, or I'm working with the city, I guess, on scheduling, um, our safety week in July, it got moved back a month now because there was a conflict with our June date with the Hy-Vee caterer. One of the things that I was working on too, that was one of the open items for the board, is we had budgeted to replace the commissioner's van this year in reviewing the state bids, um, they don't have all-wheel-drive vans anymore on bid specs, they do have one passenger van, which is an all, or it's a front-wheel drive, make sure I'm getting this right, Dick, I've been having to ask Dick and Marty for help because I'm not the car expert, I don't know a whole lot about cars. In the past, the request that I had always received that was that the vehicle have all-wheel-drive or something like that, because people are using it in the winter to travel, um, but the only alternative that they have is, uh, a front-wheel drive. The other options that the board could consider having me doing, they do have other things on the state surplus list that would be more like, I think we saw Tahos and Explorers and, um, they don't seat seven, usually most of them are five or six. Uh, the other option that we would have would be going out to bid for some kind of crossover vehicle that would allow for seven seating. My understanding is there's actually only two companies that still make all-wheel-drive vans. Most of them have been phased out and replaced with these crossovers. So I'd like direction from the board on how you'd like me to proceed.
I, I think we need to look at probably the Tahoe or Suburbans or something like that, that seems to be the kind of the, and we don't haul seven people, I mean, we may.
It's usually five, I think.
Four or five at the most, I don't think we need to go out and explore and spend extra money to get something to haul seven.
Okay.
Because you never get seven people, can all leave and come back at the same time anyway. Everybody's got commitments, they have to leave early.
And with that in mind, they did have some options for that on the state bid list, I'll have to go look at that again. Um, the thing that would be maybe nice about that is you have equalization who's often out doing things, you know, in the rural setting, that might be a good vehicle for them using when they're going out and doing appraising too if they need another vehicle, so I'll bring that back to you at the next meeting.
Okay.
I think that's all I have for.
Okay, they, one thing about it in your, the report on the budget analysis, it's, it's kind of nice to see and, and in the graphs, being somewhat visual, but you see a lot of consistency, uh, in the percentages over a period of time, Stephanie, are, are quite consistent, aren't they?
Well, yeah, because every time that we've ever designated, especially when you look through here, whenever we've designated funds with the anticipation that in March we don't drop below thirteen percent and at the end of the year, we try to end at the same twenty-three percent, so, um, or twenty-five, actually, I think now I have to look again, between twenty-five, we're always under thirty percent. And I think we usually gauge it for twenty-three to twenty-five, but then we usually end a little bit higher because there's budgets that go on spend. And, and that's how we've been managing with those additional designations for other project funds is just by looking at this on a month, but we know if in March we're not below thirteen percent, that will get us through the rest of the year.
Yep.
And, and pretty well too as well in December.
I mean, that means nothing, nothing real serious has happened over and above what we are actually doing through our budgetary process. Some counties can have something real adverse happen to them and that, that reserve really changes dramatically quickly, so. Okay, thanks, Stephanie, Abby, I'll move on to you, if you have anything for us?
Yep, uh, just regular business as usual, Clyde and I are keeping very busy, working on the budget this week to get that turned in to you next week. Uh, I did want to introduce someone to you today, Brooke Goodell is here, uh, she's the new intern in our office, she just started yesterday, uh, just completed her first year at the University of South Dakota School of Law, but she's a jackrabbit at heart too, so it's okay, it's all right.
Good, we're kind of worried about that.
We picked quality workers here, so, uh, no, so she'll be, uh, we've already got her busy going to court with Clyde and I quite a bit this week and then she might be tagging along to me if I have any civil meetings with some department heads and whatnot, so you'll probably see her floating around.
Okay, welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Anything else, Abby? Okay, I'll start at this end of the table, Dennis?
Well, the fifth, or May, uh, seventh through the eleventh, I did attend the, uh, it's a work comp risk management workshops in San Diego, which is, as you know, I represent the county, uh, on the work comp board of trustees and we attend one workshop, uh, annually and, and it's all paid through the, you know, it doesn't cost the county anything, it all comes through the, the work comp. And again, very educational workshops, you know, I sent some messages back to Stephanie about, I was going through the work, uh, the Affordable Care Act, went to a couple sessions on that and, and where we sit and.
It's a nightmare.
Requirements that need, I mean, it's really quite a, quite a lengthy process and didn't realize that there's so much reporting has to be done about, you know, when you get to that fifty level or under, over a hundred level and it's just different criteria and.
And we are compliant, because I, we, I've been doing all of that, so we're all compliant.
So it's just very, it was very interesting and, and our risk, uh, risk, you know, what's our, what are our risk or in our work comp injuries and so on and so forth, so it was good. And then on the, and then the exciting part was on May, May eleventh, flying into Denver, we had the DIC airplane before we left.
Leaving where?
Denver.
Really?
It was snowing cats and dogs, I mean, there was snowing, I mean, it was terrible snowstorm and we had a DIC airplane, I'm going, what country am I in? But anyway, we got back. And then on the thirteenth, I traveled to Pierre to attend the Law Enforcement Standards Training Commission meeting, which I also represent counties on, we had three hearings that we conducted during that, that meeting, which is busy time of year for hearings, people running for office and things like that, they have to go through a hearing with our board to, uh, get certification to go on and run for offices, so, uh, attended They have to go through a hearing with our board to get certification to go on and run for offices, so attended that. So I did not make the meeting yesterday because I've been doing so much running on these other ones, so that's all I had to report.
Okay, thank you. Stephanie?
May sixth, I spent the afternoon in the strategic planning, which was rather interesting. And then that evening, I attended the social at the innovation campus and talked to some of the tenants there, which was also quite interesting. On the thirteenth, we had the weed board meeting. I think we've about discussed that to death. And then yesterday, I went to the eight county meeting and I too was a little disappointed that Secretary of Egg was not there, even though he was on the agenda. But some dates that we might want to note is that there's a public meeting on roads having to do with this, this side of the state in Watertown on July first. And Paul Cosbough recommended that commissioners be there. I'm guessing we'll be getting some information on that.
The meetings concerning what?
Roads, roads and bridges.
Okay, oh, roads, county. I was just wondering the egg connection there with Paul Cosbough.
He's the one that.
Okay.
Brought it up, that told us about the dates.
I thought maybe it was something to do with dairies or K. Folks.
July first. Then he did, as Mr. Hale mentioned, talk about his trip to China. And there's a workforce development conference, I think it's this Thursday in Brookings.
It is, and I had RSVP'd to go, but as I said in my report, I'm gonna be out because my daughter's having surgery. So if someone would want to go in my absence, I'm already registered to go. It's a free attendance, but you did have to notify them ahead of time.
And that's the governor's, one of his deals. And I guess that's pretty much what happened at that meeting and that's all I have.
What time was that meeting in Watertown?
I don't know yet. We'll be getting more information.
I see that we have our, our meeting and our budget meeting that day, so. I thought we had July first and I wrote down budget one to five.
Possibly, we'll do the final review in the afternoon. We don't, that's not a positive, I don't think.
And eighteen. And twenty-fourth. July first was reserved, so if we have to do any last-minute changes or reviews, it's possible you'd be done before, you know, right after your regular meeting. You're gone that day now? Do we need to set an alternate date then because you have to have a day to review following the two hearings on the seventeenth and eighteenth?
June fourth? I'll be gone in the morning.
Are you gone that whole week or just the twenty-fourth? Okay, then you guys will need to meet the full July first and, well, we. Maybe I'll send out, I'll send out a meeting finder to all five of you because you will have to have another full day here to do changes before I bring back the review to you on July first. You, you have to have the two department head dates and then we have to have another full work session day.
Oh, well, well, half of the day.
Anybody, anybody available the twenty-third? Monday? The whole week? I'll send out a meeting finder.
Okay.
Well, I mean, that's, that's a review, the twenty, what we've got together, twenty-fourth, that's a review date?
Yeah, it's where, you know, the, the two first dates are just hearings to get your first review. Any budget cuts you have to make, any funding you're gonna do for non-mandated, we typically do at that secondary session.
Well, I mean, we've got a schedule. I mean, if Ryan had some.
The only. The only problem that I see with that is in the past, you've had a time when you had a budget hearing where a board member wasn't there during when the cuts were made and then later the response was, why wasn't there when the decision was, or when they discussed that? I think it's better when the full board's participating, especially if you're gonna have to make any adju- budget adjustments at all. But I can send out a meeting finder.
How about the thirtieth? I mean, I think it's easier for us to pick a day.
Right now, I agree.
How about that third of the day?
He's gone that whole week. You're back, oh, on the thirtieth? That'd be okay.
June thirty?
Yeah. Then, but then we meet the next, no, then we know.
Then the first, yeah.
We gotta be there first for a meeting.
Right.
How about the thirtieth?
Does that work for everybody? Okay.
All right, now, we've set this, guys, don't change it.
Now, stay put.
The time being.
Eight-thirty.
I would just say eight-thirty on. I'll send out a new meeting finder, or I mean, a new calendar appointment.
Okay. The twenty-fourth is canceled.
Okay. Where was I? Ryan, your turn.
All right, May sixth, I was at, at the strategic planning session and then also did attend the reception out of Research Park Innovation. I, I was gone last week in Washington DC for the National, for the National Association of Realtors and I serve on a committee called State and Local Issues. And that's based on real estate stuff, but I, I have some information there that's pretty good on what's going across throughout the nation, of what state and local governments are doing as far as real estate is concerned. So I think on the work session, we, are we planning on the work session to talk about our strategic plan and that kind of stuff and set that up? Or, or is the work session just for that or is it for?
I, what I assumed I would do for, for an agenda, and maybe I should have clarified this, you guys can correct me if it's wrong, but I would just put the first item, the discussion and review of the draft plan, the draft strategic plan. And then I was gonna just list other, other items that, you know, brought in or introduced by the board. And then I will still list those other open items that I'm aware of, just so it stays on our radar for future, just like I had in the past.
Okay, well, I'll bring some information, you know, along with that. There's some stuff that they went through with eminent domain, local governments and, and state governments using eminent domain for, and has to do more with real estate. A lot of it is interesting. There's a lot of planning that's available for local zoning, all those types of issues brought up between that board there. So I'll bring some stuff for that, but that was pretty interesting and I'm serving on that board for the next couple of years, so that'll be some good insight throughout the nation, what's going on, state and local government, as far as land use and values and stuff like that too, so. And then, so today, Tom and I are meeting on the Thirty-Fourth Avenue project and then I have ICAP tomorrow, so that's about it.
Tom?
Okay, the sixth, we had a commission meeting, we had a strategic plan meeting, we had the innovation campus, was a little break. And then the my fund continued with my first city and county joint planning and zoning meeting, which was very interesting way to process. And followed by our regular planning zoning meeting. Bob did a good job and Megan getting us out of there at eleven, eleven-thirty. So that was the end of my day. Thanks for the cookies, that finally topped it off. So that was the sixth. Planning zoning is a very interesting place and with variances in conditional use. That's all I can say. And this comprehensive plan, we were gonna talk about a little bit at the, in between those meetings, but everything took so long that we haven't got to that yet and I continue to say that'll be very important for us as we plan ahead to make any zoning changes and they will be very interesting for us to participate in. On the seventh, attended the nine-eleven with Donnie and we talked about, did I understand that right? That there, we were gonna ask that there be two dispatchers and that's the extra money that we're gonna have to be coming up with and just talking about other counties, regional centers and, and I read the Union County article about the sheriff and the county commission down there not getting along. One has one view and one is proposing another view. But in that whole article, it didn't mention the additional, additional dispatcher cost, which I found kind of interesting because that's what's driving it, is money. And these smaller counties are having a hard time coming up with it. But anyway, we had the nine-eleven meeting and we're gonna work on our budget here shortly and Donnie will bring up what anything I missed. East Central Behavioral Health had their meeting last night. They assigned some new board members, which would be great, some good people. And they have Thursday, their second annual mental health forum. And, and that's the flyer that goes with it and it's open to the public Thursday evening at the Brookings Health System. There'll be some refreshments supplied, supplied by the caterer of whoever has a contract at Brookings Health. That's the back of the, but, and they point out in there that they are in every school in the county and providing services there, as well as some area schools, Head Start and other programs. So they wanted to publicize. It was very well attended last year. In fact, they moved the location because it was overly attended last year. And this autistic is the prime discussion, but any mental health issue. And then our two o'clock meeting, and I'm, I'm gonna ask why we got everybody here and we talked about two hundred and thirteen. That's the one, right, that Novita's on, two thirteen, correct? Okay, are we gonna, did we plan, if Novita project goes ahead, are we talking sixty-six feet or a hundred? Because I know it's gonna be asked by Sioux Valley while they're here for the meeting today, because they want to know. Were we sixty-six or a hundred feet? Was that our intent?
Think that, if I'm recalling correctly, we wanted to go with the hundred feet because there was also already, I think Carrie Brett had had some conversation with Valero and they understood and that there would be enough room.
I'm, maybe, does anybody have the documents still?
Dick, do you know if we had?
On?
On the Novita road, if they were anticipating a sixty-foot, sixty-six foot or a hundred foot right-of-way?
Where'd we end up in that, all that discussions that we had back then? Where did we end up at sixty, we were gonna stay at sixty-six feet or a hundred?
I don't remember we had to purchase any right-of-way in that.
Yeah. I, I don't believe it was narrowed down. Basically, I think they were gonna wait till they had the survey done by CDI and that would determine what might be eligible.
Right, and we didn't do any of that because you guys stopped the work on it without having the notice to proceed. So I don't think any of that had been determined because they hadn't even done the survey work.
That. Well, that was my memory that there wasn't a decision, but, and, but they are, they're getting ready to redo that. All their electrical on that road and of course, they're very interested in wanting to know the right-of-ways.
On two thirteen?
Yes.
If I see Carrie at Rotary today, I can ask him. But it, it just seemed that, you know, in, in, nothing in writing, but in, in general conversation and I can ask him if he had that. But it seemed like he mentioned that he'd already visited with Valero about right-of-way, extending right-of-way if necessary, things like that, so I'll, if I see Carrie.
I don't remember the hundred feet at all, but that doesn't mean it wasn't done, but I just don't.
No, no decision was made.
But, well, could you get back to me, you know, probably won't be confirmed anything, but at least a little more information before the two o'clock meeting? Just give me a text or.
Yeah, I can call it.
A jingle, yeah. And that's it, thanks.
Tom, I, I guess maybe I can give you a little bit of an update on the nine-one-one because I sure run that state nine-one-one committee. What it is, is that requirements were set up for a two-person, two-person rule. And when they were set up, the larger dispatch centers then went to the two-person. And part of that is they raised the surcharge into, from seventy-five cents to a dollar and a quarter. Part of that increase was for giving the dispatch centers that are meeting the two-person rule, which would be Brookings, because, you know, we, so we get extra money from the nine-one-one surcharge that comes into the state. And so we actually get extra money to be able to do, to provide that service, but it's gonna cost us a little extra. And then there could be the possibility that we could go out and maybe get additional counties to join us if they can't afford to continue to operate the way they are. Now, you can operate with one dispatcher, but you don't get the extra money. Plus, and the reason that the, the board went back and said, okay, we can understand that places don't need somebody sitting, two people sitting there twenty-four hours a day, but they still want to keep their dispatch centers, so they're setting up what's called next generation dispatch, which is there's gonna be one place in the state that all the mapping, all the addressing, all the customer database is going to be in. And everybody retrieves it from that same place. So it would be a redundant system where someone dispatching in this county could all of a sudden have their calls referred this, to sent to a different county dispatch center. They would receive the maps, they would receive all the same data. So it's kind of redundancy, but it's not the two-person rule. So some dispatchers, centers are going with a full-blown two-person, some are going with a redundant system. So that's kind of what, but you don't get as much money from the, from the nine-one-one surcharge if you don't do that, so just, that's it.
Okay, anything else? Any other comments that you could? Okay, and I too was at the nine-one-one and we had a good discussion. We talked about different things. We mentioned the sirens and, and the warning system in the county. We talked a lot about Bob Hill because he wasn't there. So, we, I think we had a good meeting. We went over budget items, we went over some of the bylaws, some of the changes that we probably should make there because we hadn't updated them since basically birth. And so we're gonna review those and no major changes, but some places, one, one would said it referred to city or county and we thought, let's change it to city slash county. And that was forbidding because one of, one or the other might have an opportunity through their organizations to get a, a better bid or a better opportunity and just, just some minor things to try and update them. The, the sirens, we talked quite a bit about it, Bob, but, you know, no decisions, but we understand the need to have them strategically located and also looking at development in the county and where's probably the best place to locate them and, and now and in the future as well. Then, of course, the strategic planning session. And then we had LGAC, we call it Local Government Advisory Committee, Executive Committee Meeting by teleconference. And believe it or not, I probably get more comments from citizens and people who I would never expect are watching government, government activity, which is wonderful. I'm glad to hear these comments, but this is on the waters issue and the change, proposed changes and clarification regarding the definitions of the Clean Water Act. And we're really gonna have to watch that. Our advisory board is concerned about it and getting local governments and their local communities and small communities that we represent, for the most part, are those ten thousand and under, which we have several in Brookings County. But also, when you take a community the size of Brookings, we certainly fall into that rural category and, and so we need to have a seat at the table. And I think I'm going to St. Paul on the twenty-eighth. We're gonna have a meeting with Gina McCarthy, the director of EPA is going to be there. And we're all bringing, as board members, comments that we're hearing from our citizens, our local groups, activities. So if any of you got any comments that you'd like to forward with, that I can bring forward to that meeting. But there's just gotta be a big effort to make sure that we're not regulated completely out of economic futures by the regulations that are proposed or the definitions that isn't the regulation. A lot of those are there, but now it's the def, how are they defining them? And they say the guidance is this and we define it as such, so we want to be very, we want to stay on top of this. State Association is going to have a conference call sometime after the WIR conference with Julie Uffner and we will be made aware of that as well, so. And maybe our state association can make some, forward some comments. And, and we're asking that the comment period be extended another ninety days rather than ending July twenty-first. And we're not the only organization. The League of Cities has made the same request as well as some others. I, I did go to the SDSU Chamber event at the foundation and it was very interesting. And I, I never know if I should, because I'm a chamber member, am I there as a member of the chamber or am I invited as a commissioner? But a nice event. They got some more great plans for, for improving that area of the campus. And, you know, the, the preliminary drawings are very attractive. I mean, it would really showcase that part of the community, so. It's exciting. I did go to the Leadership Brookings graduation. And county had two employees that graduated from the course. And it was, I wish you all could have been there. They, they took them, they broke them into, into teams and they had to come up with community projects or a project. And then they made their formal presentation of their project at the, at the bank or at the graduation ceremony. It, it was, you know, the Bark Park was one of them. And I think one of our employees was on the Bark Park. And they were actually thinking of starting the, the exercise area for dogs, finding a place. Well, then they got into the process and they discovered the city already headed in the works. So now they're working with the city and, oh, they created a Bark Park brochure explaining all the rules and where it was and how to get there. And, and, you know, they put a lot of time into it, so it was, it's a great program. I think that's the last I have. Does any other commissioner have anything? Okay, without objection, then we'll recess and go into executive session for personnel reasons. And this is board members only, correct, Dennis? Okay? I think, motion to go into executive session? Okay. Motion by Falcon, second by Progman. Call a roll, yes, 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 yes. Aye, aye, aye.